I call this the September twentieth, twenty twenty-two meeting of Lincoln County Board Commissioners to Order. Our invocation tonight will be given by Jason Colwell. Jason's the Associate Pastor and the Children's Minister at the Park City Baptist Church. Tonight, our pledge of allegiance will be given by Ava Ogul. Ava's six years old, she's a first grader at South Lincoln School. She likes to read, cook, can, and take care of chickens. She's the daughter of Lee and Mary Ogul, and she's the great-granddaughter of Donnie and Kathy Ogul, and Raven and Pam Hunter. If you would, please stand for the invocation and take a standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you, Lord, and we are so grateful to you for all your blessings. Lord, we thank you so much because you blessed this county. And Lord, I thank you personally for the opportunity to minister here. Now, Lord, I pray that you be with this meeting and be with all of the leaders here tonight. Lord, we thank you so much for all of these leaders and commissioners, Lord. We know that having a job in the public eye, Lord, is a difficult thing, and to be a leader is a difficult thing. So, Lord, we just pray that you give them resolve in doing what is your will. Give them wisdom, or give them a spirit of unity as we meet tonight. Lord, and as they are able, we pray that you fill them with your Spirit, Lord. Devote us to you, Lord. Help us to devote ourselves to you. Lord, we pray that you would keep on our minds at all times that, Lord, Jesus died, was buried, he resurrected, and he's coming again. Lord, and it is that in the almighty, precious name of Jesus that we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ava, and thank you, Jason. Do we have a roll call already, Madam Clerk?
We do, we have twenty-four commissioners present.
Twenty-four commissioners present. Announcements, I know it may seem a long ways off, but next month, our meeting is on October the eighteenth. We're planning on a education session on our new voting system at five o'clock. We probably will meet in the conference room in the basement. If this room is available, we'll do it in this room. But court usually goes right up to time for us to start our regular session. Five o'clock on the eighteenth on the new voting system. Friday, this Friday, at ten o'clock, have a meeting with the city administrator and the mayor on the animal control issue, so hopefully next week we'll have some news for you on that. We have two, there's two meetings of minutes in your packet. I would entertain a motion for approval on the August sixteenth and the September first meeting of this body.
Motion approved.
Commissioner Bradford makes a motion, Commissioner Mitchell seconds. Any questions or comments on either of those meetings? All in favor of approval, the way they were presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. You should have received minutes from fourteen monthly committee meetings in your packet. We'd entertain a motion acknowledging receipt of those. Commissioner Douglas makes a motion. Commissioner Nick secondes it. All in favor acknowledging receipt of those, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Then we get into the fun part of our committee. We will go through these. If there's additional nominations from the floor on any of these, just raise your hand and let me know if there's not. We'll go through as they are. The first one is consideration for approval to appoint Troy Frasran, Commissioner Frasran, and Commissioner Hambrick to the Adult Oriented Establishment Control Board. Those terms will run until November of this next year, twenty twenty-three. Commissioner Cunningham?
Move approved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mr. Guntherberg seconds that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. The next one, consideration for approval to elect Commissioner Coley to the Ardmore Giles Lincoln Industrial Development Board. That term expires January of twenty twenty-five. What's the will of the commission on this one? Commissioner Sanders makes a motion, Commissioner Walker seconds that. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. The next one is consideration for approval to reelect Commissioner Haines, Commissioner Walker, to the Beer Board. That term expires September of twenty-four. What's the will of the commission on this one?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Frasran makes a motion for acceptance. Commissioner Douglas seconds that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Our next one's consideration for approval to elect Commissioner Rogers to the Beer Board. That term expires September of twenty twenty-four. What's the will of the commission on this item?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Nick makes a motion, Commissioner Sprague seconds. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item, consideration for approval to reelect Commissioner Mitchell to the Chamber of Commerce Board. That expires September of twenty twenty-four. Will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Sprague makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Hambrick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item just is an item that the delinquent sale committee automatically is by members of the financial management, so we move down to the next item, we get to financial management just below that. But our next one's consideration for approval to appoint Jason Nick, Commissioner Nick, to the Federal Main Street Board as our county representative. That term expires on January of twenty-four. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Young makes a motion for acceptance. Do I have a second? Commissioner Rolls Walter, it may be a little difficult. You know, the first hyphenated name you've had when I think of the commission. Seconds that. All in favor of approval of that one, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously approved. The next item is consideration for approval to reelect Ben, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Ewen, Commissioner Cunningham to the Financial Management Committee. Those terms would expire September of twenty twenty-four to your term. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Coley, or?
Walker.
Commissioner Walker makes that motion, Commissioner Coley seconds it. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. The next one is consideration for approval to elect Commissioner Coley and Commissioner Rogers to the Financial Management Committee. Those terms also would expire September of twenty twenty-four. What's the will of the commission on this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I got a motion here, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Young. I acknowledge you.
I would move that, this, I guess, be amended, allow Steve Sprague to also be nominated.
Okay, so, Lord, do I have a second to that motion? No, second from, okay. So, we will have a? Okay, Dan Eldridge has been nominated. Any, do I have a second to Commissioner Eldridge's nomination? Commissioner Young makes that motion. Any other nominations? Okay, this is the way this will work on this. We will call the roll by commissioner's name. You can vote for two. There's two positions open there. Is it only one?
We got you and Rokester Lieutenant, Director of Schools, is three, and then the three that we just elected, Ben Brown, Kate and I, so that leaves one person left on that seven-person committee.
Okay.
Got four for one slot.
Okay. We currently have four on the commission, on that committee, is that correct?
Four commissioners served on that, and we just elected.
Okay. There can be five, because I got dying to look it up. Is there an objection to adding a fifth member to this?
Gives us eight and doesn't give you a tiebreaker then.
Well?
See, I think we originally thought that maybe Mr. Brown wasn't going to take that committee, and I think that's where the two.
That came in.
Yeah.
Y'all tell me what you want to do.
We just need to leave it at one.
Okay, that's fine with me. Y'all fine with that?
I'm okay with leaving it this technical.
Well, we just, if someone make a motion, we'll vote on it. We'll see which way the commission, you want four or five commissioners on that. Is that correct? Is that, you making that motion? Do I have a second? Okay.
Who was that, Frasran?
Commissioner Frasran.
Move it to him.
Okay, if you vote yes on this one, you're voting to raise that number to five of four. Okay? We'll have a roll.
Any discretion?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any paperwork from the state that says that we can nominate instead of something?
Yes, sir, I do. It has, this is, this is when we changed to the Act of eighty-one. It really is kind of complicated because it can be an investment committee or it can be a financial management committee, but it can be, I didn't get the exact wording here. I was dying to get, look, I said, because it's?
Yeah.
I'll give you, um, let's see if I have the exact wording.
Taylor was, Taylor nominated, Eldridge, and Young, and Young seconded it. Dave nominated Sprague. Who was there who seconded?
The number of members of this committee and mode of selection is according to the resolution of the county legislative body. It gives that number then, it has. In counties that have adopted the optional county financial management system of nineteen eighty-one, the county legislative body may establish an investment committee composed of five members appointed by the legislative body. The members may or may not be members of the county legislative body. If the county has adopted, the county legislative body may choose to have the financial management committee perform the function of the investment committee. So that's where the five members are.
Well, that sounds like a whole lot more than just adding a person. Maybe we need the financial management committee to make a recommendation and then bring it back. Maybe we do the one slot tonight, and if the financial management decides we need another one, then we bring it back for an eighth person.
We have a mo, according to this, if you want, if you want?
I understand. That would be reason to vote against it temporarily, because, like I say, that sounds like, you know, you're changing our financial management committee, and we can't do that just by simply adding a member. A little deeper than that, but that's my.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a question on having discussions, is it excessive absenteeism at some TAs and other commissioners at meetings? I think that are being looked into, serve on an important committee like this.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't, you were looking other way.
Sorry, I was, does excessive absenteeism of a commissioner at meetings affect their ability? Or the, can they serve on more important committees?
Since my term, only the commission added as county mayor, no one's been censured because of failure to be at meetings. But I don't know that, I don't know that there is a rule that covers that. But I don't mind us looking it up, but do you have any input on that, Ava? Yeah. Okay. Okay, we have a motion, been properly seconded, any other discussion?
Read the motion back one more time for everybody.
Okay. If you vote yes on this, we would be having five commissioners on the financial management committee. If you vote yes, it will be for making it five members. If you vote no, it will remain four commissioners. Everybody understand? Okay? We'll have a roll call vote.
And that, that, that motion to do the five was Tor, Commissioner Young and Frasran seconded, is correct, okay?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Okay. And the reason we're taking this on this, because it makes a difference whether we're electing one or two to this. Y'all understand?
We're doing that to do the five members first, and then we will do the positions.
And then we'll have a roll call on those that were nominated for those positions.
Coley? Sanders?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Brown? Caldwell?
No.
Rogers?
Yes.
Ashley?
No.
Ewen?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Bradford?
No.
Tackett?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Sprague?
No.
Eldridge?
Yes.
Nick?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cunningham?
No.
Haines?
No.
Young?
Yes.
Bryant?
No.
Douglas?
Yes.
Guntherberg?
No.
Frasran?
Yes.
Hambrick?
No.
Rolls Walter?
No.
We have ten yes, fourteen no.
Okay, it fails, we remain at four commissioners on that. Now, we will vote on one position on adding to that. Will you read the nominees?
Yes. We have Coley and Rogers.
Okay.
Tay, Eldridge and Sprague.
Okay. Y'all understand, when she calls the roll in your name, you will answer one of those names. If one receives thirteen votes on the first round, that one's elected. If no one receives thirteen votes, we will drop the lower one and vote on the next three again. Any questions on procedure on that? Everybody understand? Okay. Read them one more time.
Okay. Coley, Rogers, Eldridge, Sprague.
Okay.
And they are voting for?
One.
One. Rolls Walter?
Sprague.
Hambrick?
Sprague.
Frasran?
Eldridge.
Guntherberg?
Sprague.
Douglas?
Eldridge.
Bryant?
Sprague.
Young?
Eldridge.
Haines?
Sprague.
Cunningham?
Sprague.
Taylor?
Eldridge.
Nick?
Eldridge.
Eldridge?
Eldridge.
Sprague?
Sprague.
Tackett?
Sprague.
Bradford?
Sprague.
Mitchell?
Sprague.
Ewen?
Sprague.
Ashley?
Sprague.
Rogers?
Eldridge.
Caldwell?
Sprague.
Brown?
Sprague.
Walker?
Sprague.
Sanders?
Eldridge.
Coley?
Sprague.
Eight for Eldridge, sixteen for Sprague.
Okay. Commissioner Sprague was elected to that one, so we move to the next item, which? Consideration for approval to reelect Commissioner Douglas, Commissioner Sprague, and Commissioner Mitchell to the Fire EMA Committee. Those terms would expire September twenty twenty-four. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Haines makes a motion for approval, do I have a second? Commissioner Taylor seconds that. Any additional nominations on this one?
Here.
Monty Colwell's been nominated. Yes, sir? Okay, Commissioner Rolls Walter?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Nominate Danny Walker.
Commissioner Walker's been nominated. Okay, y'all realize, under this that we're voting, you're, you nominated somebody that, uh, that can knock you off the committee. Because we're, we're voting on three positions here. Everybody understand that?
Oh, these are the, these are the first three.
That's right. Okay.
Just tripping away at that five, we have that five.
Yeah, but it's a different item, it's the next item over there.
Got two open slots on the next.
Yeah, but these are, this, this item we just talked about is for re-electing those Douglas, Sprague, and Mitchell. I don't want y'all to be confused, y'all, that's what you want. Okay? You got, you got those.
Okay, we have, he withdrew Rolls Walter. Okay, so we have Sprague, Mitchell, Caldwell, and Douglas, sorry. Sprague, I can't keep my line here, Mitchell, Caldwell, Douglas, and Walker.
Uh, was it Rolls Walter, but you withdrew?
He withdrew Rolls Walter, but Douglas nominated Walker.
Okay. Commissioner Walker. Okay?
And Sprague nominated Colwell. Yeah. Sprague, Mitchell, Colwell, Douglas, and Walker.
Okay, y'all understand, which calls your name, you vote for, this gets a little more complicated. This is for three positions. Y'all write down who these nominees are now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think that it's a confusion. I don't think we want to vote. We want to go ahead and vote, reelect Douglas.
Well, that's what I tried to straighten out, but that is what everybody wanted, so.
I think that's what we want to do, and then move to the next.
Well, but that is what the commission said. I understand, I agree with you, Jack. This was a reelection of this, but that's not what happened. Okay, who did you nominate?
Caldwell.
Okay.
I'll withdraw Walker.
Okay. Walker has been withdrawn.
So, we're going back to the original, okay?
Well, now, has everyone been withdrawn besides those three?
Yes.
I'll try to keep straight from now on, but, okay.
So they're?
Let's start back over. Do I have a motion for the reelection of?
We did.
Douglas, Sprague, and Mitchell to the EMA Fire Committee?
We did.
Mr. Taylor makes a motion, Commissioner Haines seconds that. Okay, any questions, Lord, about the vote? All in favor of re-electing those three, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. All right. Unanimously approved. Now, our next item is for two vacancies that were on there. And consideration for those was Commissioner Eldridge and Tackett to add to those. Are there other nominees to those two positions? Okay, Commissioner Rolls Walter's been added to the other. Commissioner Walker?
That was by Coley?
Uh, no, by Sanders.
Sanders, sorry. Not looking.
Commissioner Colwell has been nominated.
And Sanders was.
Any others? Okay? You read them. On this one, a roll call, you will be voting for two. So you will call two of the names that the clerk is about to read out. So you may want to write these down.
We have Commissioners Eldridge, Tackett, Rolls Walter, Walker, and Caldwell.
Okay. Five nominees, you're voting for two.
Um, Eldridge, Tackett, Rolls Walter, Walker, and Caldwell.
Okay. If two wants to receive thirteen on the first round, those two are elected. If one receives thirteen, it would be elected, and we would go back and drop the bottom one and vote on the next round. Everybody understand that? Any questions? Voting for two. Madam Clerk?
Coley?
Walker and Eldridge.
Sanders?
Walker and Rolls Walter.
Walker?
Walker and Caldwell.
Brown?
Walker and Caldwell.
Caldwell?
Um, Walker and Caldwell.
Rogers?
Eldridge and, um, Walker.
Ashley?
Tackett and Caldwell.
Ewen?
Walker and Caldwell.
Mitchell?
Walker and Caldwell.
Bradford?
Walker and Caldwell.
Tackett?
Tackett.
Eldridge.
Sprague?
Walker and Caldwell.
Eldridge?
Walker and Caldwell.
Nick?
Eldridge and Caldwell.
Taylor?
Eldridge, Rolls, Walker, Walker.
Cunningham?
Walker and Colwell.
Haines?
Rolls, Walter, Walker.
Young?
Eldridge and Caldwell.
Bryant?
Rolls, Walter and Walker.
Rolls, Walter and Wa, Walker. Douglas?
Walker and Eldridge.
Guntherberg?
Walker and Caldwell.
Frasran?
Walker and JWR.
Oh, gotcha, sorry. I gotcha. Hambrick? Hambrick?
Caldwell, Rolls, Walter.
Walt, Rolls, Walter.
On the record, you can just say Rolls, since we have seven, I totally find it.
Okay. Rolls.
This only occurs every four years, so I can't think about it.
I kind of missed Cole on the, on the blackboard.
We looked for one. Couldn't find one. We have a small discrepancy, but it's not going to matter because two both are above thirteen.
Okay.
By more than what that one would matter.
So tell us the two above thirteen.
Okay, um, Walker and Caldwell.
Walker and Caldwell are the new members of the Fire EMA.
Just for transparency's sake, we probably need to read.
I will. Um, Anna has eight for Eldridge. I have seven. And the one we have a discrepancy on is the ones that Glenn Douglas voted for. Who did you, who were?
Walker and Eldridge.
Well, okay. I was wrong. Mark.
Okay.
Okay, I apologize for that.
Walker and Caldwell.
Yes.
Okay. The next item, consideration for approval to elect Daniel Eldridge, Commissioner Eldridge, and Commissioner Caldwell to the Industrial Corating Committee. Those terms would expire January of twenty twenty-three. What's the will of the Commission on this item? Okay, that motion for, do I have a second?
We'll have to look around here a little bit before we take off on this thing.
You can add to it, okay? Did you want to add?
Steve, I nominate Steve Sprague.
Steve Sprague's been nominated. Okay? All right. We have, any other nominations? Okay, we got Commissioner Sprague, Commissioner Caldwell, and Commissioner Eldridge nominated for those two positions. So again, you'll be voting for two.
We don't have a second on that motion.
Uh, that, these are just nominations. It doesn't matter on that. Okay? You can. Okay. Okay, Caldwell's withdrawn or named. Uh, now would entertain a motion that we elect Eldridge and Sprague as others.
Sprague.
Eldridge and Sprague.
Okay.
Okay, we got a, we got a, uh, Walker makes a motion, seconding my grant on that. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously approved. All right, next one is consideration for approval of Commissioner Rolls to the Law Enforcement Committee. That term expires December of twenty twenty-two. What's the will of the Commission on this item? Commissioner Ewan makes a motion. Commissioner Douglas seconds. Okay, any other?
Second, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Steve, are you going to?
There's some, okay. Okay, have you just been elected to one year? Steve, okay, you're, you actually went over the number.
He needs to resign from law enforcement. That's what I was getting at, when he said two slots instead of one.
And I was going to do that anyways.
Okay. Okay, 'cause, near the other one, here's the, here's the Commissioners that aren't maxed out, uh, they, from the re-elected ones. Commissioner Ashley was only serving on two. Commissioner Sprague was on three until tonight. Commissioner Taylor is on three before tonight. Commissioner Bryant, three. Commissioner Douglas, three. Everybody else was maxed out on some by as many as two committees, but, okay. So you, you've been elected to two new ones tonight, and you are wanting to resign from. Okay, and we haven't got to them yet. That's what we're.
That's where we're on now.
Okay, so we could have one other person. Commissioner Rolls has been nominated. Do I have another? Commissioner Walker's recognized. Okay, Commissioner Frazran, okay? If it stops there.
I'd like to nominate Jack Ashley, please.
Commissioner Ashley, been nominated. Anyone else? Okay, we have two positions for three nominees. Everybody understand? Okay? When you call out your name, you will vote for two.
Um, we have Rolls, Frazran, and Ashley. Uh, Coley.
Rose, Frazran.
Sanders.
Rose, Frazran.
Walker.
Rose, Frazran.
Brown.
Rose, Frazran.
Caldwell.
Uh, Rose, Frazran.
Rogers.
Rose, Frazran.
Ashley.
Rose, Frazran.
Ewan.
Rose, Ashley.
Mitchell.
Rose, Ashley.
Bradford.
Rose, Ashley.
Tackett.
Uh, Rose, Frazran.
Sprague.
Rose, Ashley.
Eldridge.
Rose, Ashley.
Nix.
Rose, Frazran.
Taylor.
Rose, Ashley.
Cunningham.
Rose, Frazran.
Haynes.
Rose, Frazran.
Young. Bryant.
Frazran, Rose.
Douglas.
Rose, Ashley.
Guntherberg.
Rose, Frazran.
Frazran.
Rose, Frazran.
Hambrick.
Rose, Frazran.
Wal, Rose. I'm going to have to mark it off. I have twenty-three for Rolls, sixteen for Frazran, one abstention, seven for Ashley.
Okay? Okay. Next, next item, consideration for approval to appoint Commissioner Bradford, Commissioner Haynes, Commissioner Walker, Dr. Theresa Morrison to the Lincoln County Ethics Committee. That term would expire September twenty twenty-three. What's the will of the Commission on this item?
I approve.
Okay, motion approved by Commissioner Guntherberg. Do I have a second? Commissioner Taylor, seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next item, consideration for approval to appoint, uh, one to the Lincoln County Ethics Committee. Uh, term expires, uh, September of twenty twenty-three. Uh, Commissioner Sanders, uh, did not want to be reappointed to that, so the floor is open for nominations.
That's your appointment, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, you want to be on?
No, I can't. I'm overloaded already.
Let me look at my list, uh.
It can be anybody, right? I mean, it doesn't have to be a.
It could be. Commissioner Taylor, would you serve on that? You're not on it already, are you? Okay. I'd like to submit the name of Commissioner Taylor to that position. Okay, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Think Commissioner Sanders, if you were easily replaced or anything. All right, next item, consideration for approval to report, uh, Charles Hunter to the Lincoln County Planning Committee. That term expires September of twenty twenty-six. What's the will of the Commission on this item?
I approve.
Okay, Commissioner Guntherberg makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ewan, seconds. All in favor of that approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved unless somebody says no. Unanimously approved. Next item, consideration for approval to elect Commissioner Rolls to the Parks and Recreation Committee. That term expires January twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Frazran makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ewan, seconds. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next item, consideration for approval to re-elect Commissioner Young, Commissioner Bryant, Commissioner Ewan, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Bradford to the Personnel Committee. Those terms would expire September twenty twenty-four. What's the will of the Commission on this item? Okay, Commissioner Walker makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Uh, Commissioner Guntherberg, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Next item, consideration for approval to appoint Judge Andy Myrie, Clark Wagner, Randy DeLamp, Jack Cowery, Phyllis Calz, Mark Mitchell, Commissioner Mitchell, uh, Sherry Tomerlin, and Matt McCollitt to the Records Committee. Those terms would expire September twenty twenty-six. What's the will of the Commission on this item?
Move that be reported.
Okay, Commissioner Bryant makes a motion. Second, Commissioner Douglas. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next one, consideration for approval to re-elect Commissioner Guntherberg to the Road Committee. That term would expire September twenty twenty-four. What's the will of the Commission on this item? I'm sorry, Commissioner Sprague makes a motion. Commissioner Nix, seconds. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously approved. Next item, consideration for approval to elect Commissioner Nix, Commissioner Frazran to the Road Committee. Those terms would expire September twenty twenty-four. What's the will of the Commission on this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Move that Danny Walker be nominated?
Okay, we got, let's see, there's two more that can go on there. Y'all want to do these?
Well, I was wondering who, my next question was, who else, who hasn't got a committee? Because we're getting down to the end of here. Need to find out who's got no committee or have you won?
Okay, who has, who has, who of the new Commissioners has not got a committee yet? Okay, Commissioner Tackett does not, uh, and she's up for this one, correct? No, she's, uh, she is Fire EMA, okay. She was, okay. We've got, okay, on this one, um, we can, we, we need to fill four positions on this one, on the Road Committee. Uh, and we have suggested on those with Commissioner Nix and Commissioner Frazran. Okay, Commissioner Tackett is not on a committee. Who else was not? Commissioner Coley has one. Who had, who of the new ones only has one besides Commissioner Coley? Commissioner Nix has one, Commissioner Eldridge has one. We've got several. Uh, but now, we've got some down here, uh, as we go down, we've got suggested on these, we've got Commissioner Frazran to add one more, Commissioner Tackett, Commissioner Nix, Commissioner Coley, and that's it. So we can still take two more. Uh, and the only ones of the, Commissioner Ashley, uh, can add a committee, and Commissioner Bryant can add a committee. You didn't, you hadn't picked up a new one tonight, have you? Commissioner Douglas, have you picked up another one tonight?
Don't think so.
Okay, if you haven't picked up one, you're eligible for one other committee. Okay.
Or who? Who we got nominated? We nominated anyone?
Yes, um, of the ones, of the ones that, um, let's see, Commissioner Nix and Commissioner Frazran, um, are nominated. We've got two other positions.
And Doug, you nominated Walker? Is that right, or is that still? Okay. You withdraw?
I withdraw, and I have no.
Yeah, Danny's older than me.
I'd like to nominate this Tackett.
Okay?
I nominate Tackett.
Okay? Any other nominations?
Nominate Cole.
And Tackett nominated.
Okay, that makes us five. We don't want that one. Little call, okay?
Who was the last one?
Okay, we got Commissioner Nix, Commissioner Frazran, um, Commissioner Tackett, Commissioner Ashley. Ashley.
And what was the last nomination?
Commissioner Coley.
Who nominated?
Cunningham.
We need more paper. Room on the paper. Okay, so we have Commissioners.
Okay, y'all need to write these down now. There's five names, and you're voting for four.
Um, so we have Nix, Frazran, Tackett, Ashley, and Coley.
Is that five?
Three, four, five, yes, sir.
Okay, everybody understand? You need those names repeated?
One second.
We'll go slow.
Okay, I have Nix, Frazran, Tackett, Ashley, and Coley that have been nominated.
And you're voting for four.
Voting for four.
Okay. You're ready for low call, please.
Okay.
Is it helpful if we put them in alphabetical order, or is it making it?
It doesn't matter to me. I will follow it, hopefully. If not, I'll say, wait a minute, I didn't get that. Nix, Frazran, Tackett, Ashley, and Coley.
Everybody got it? Give them a second. Someone with left hand, did I say?
They're voting for four. So, so are we putting those two items together?
Yeah.
These two are together.
This is all for Road Committee.
Who's doing the minutes tomorrow? That's my question. Okay. Keep that low. Be ready.
Okay, y'all ready? Commissioner Frazran, y'all ready over here? Okay, all ready, let's go.
Okay, Coley.
Nix, Frazran, Tackett, Cole.
Sanders.
Nix, Coley, Tackett, Ashley.
Walker.
Nix, Coley, Ashley, Tackett.
Brown.
Nix, Frazran. Coley and Tackett.
Caldwell.
Ashley, Tackett, Nix, Coley.
Rogers.
Tackett, Nix, Ashley, and Coley.
Ashley.
Nix, Frazran, Tackett, and Ashley.
Ewan.
Nix, Ashley, Coley, Tackett.
Mitchell.
Nix, Frazran, Ashley, Tackett.
Bradford.
Nix, Cooley, Frazren, Ashley.
I'm sorry, the last one?
Tackett.
Ashley.
Tackett.
Tackett, I'm sorry. I just wanna confirm, Mr. Bradford, you said Nix, Frazren, Tackett, and Ashley. Okay, Tackett?
Ashley, Tackett, Frazren, Cooley.
Sprague?
Tackett, Cooley, Nix, and Ashley.
Eldridge?
Nix, Frazren, Tackett, Ashley.
Nix?
Nix, Frazren, Tackett, Ashley.
Taylor?
Nix, Frazren, Ashley, Cooley.
Cunningham?
Nix, Frazren, Tackett, and Cooley.
Haynes?
Nix, Frazren, Tackett, Ashley.
Young?
Nix, Frazren, Tackett, and Ashley.
Bryant?
Tackett, Nix, Frazren, Cooley.
Douglas?
Nix, Frazren, Tackett, Cooley.
Guntherberg?
Nix, Frazren, Tackett, Cooley.
Frazren?
Nix, Frazren, Tackett, and Cooley.
Hambrick?
Cooley, Nix, Frazren, Ashley.
Rolls?
Nix, Frazren, Tackett, and Ashley.
In this, it would just be the top four vote getters. Cause most of them probably gonna have over thirteen, so it's, and there's, and we're not gonna be dropping. If we drop the bottom one, you're gonna be electing the top four, so it's the top four, the top vote getters.
Okay.
Okay.
You want the top four?
Top four.
Uh, Commissioner Nix with twenty-three. Commissioner Tackett with twenty-two. Commissioner Frazren with eighteen. And Commissioner Ashley with seventeen.
Okay, those are the new members to the Road Committee. All right, next item, consideration for approval to reelect Commissioner Haynes, Commissioner Ashley, Commissioner Sprague, Commissioner Walker to the Rules and Legislative Committee. That term expires September of twenty twenty-four. What's the will of the commission on this item?
Duncan Burden.
Commissioner Duncan Burden makes a motion, Commissioner Ewen seconds, any additional nominations? See, none, all in favor of those, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. You unanimously approve. Next item, consideration for approval to elect Commissioner Cooley to the Rules and Legislative Committee. That term expires September twenty twenty-four. What's the will of the commission on this item?
Duncan Burden.
Motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Frazren. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. You unanimously approve. Next one, consideration for approval to reelect Commissioner Cunningham, Commissioner Ashley, Commissioner Duncan Burden, and Commissioner Taylor to the Solid Waste Committee. Those terms would expire September twenty twenty-four. What's the will of the commission on this item?
Duncan Burden.
Commissioner Duncan Burden makes a motion for approval, do I have a second? Commissioner Ewen seconds, any additions? All in favor of approval, love reelection, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. You unanimously approve. The next item, consideration for approval to elect Commissioner Nix to the Solid Waste Committee. That term would expire September twenty twenty-four. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Frazren makes a motion for approval, Commissioner Duncan Burden seconds. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. You unanimously approve. Next item, consideration for approval to appoint Commissioner Tackett to the Tax Relief Committee. That term expires January twenty twenty-three. This would be to fill Commissioner Dingerfield's place on that committee. What's the will of the commission on this item?
Duncan Burden.
So then, my Commissioner Sprague makes a motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Nick seconds, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. You unanimously approve. Next item, consideration for approval to reelect Randy Dillap, Betty Chrison, bring the roles to the Three Star Housing Committee. Those terms would expire September twenty twenty-three. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Mitchell makes a motion for approval, do I have a second? Uh, Commissioner Hambrick makes a second. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. You unanimously approve. I believe we're down to our last one. Consideration for approval to appoint Commissioner Bradford to the Zoning Appeal Board. That term would expire January twenty twenty-five. What's the will of the commission on this item?
Duncan Burden.
Commissioner Walker makes a motion for approval, do I have a second? Commissioner Haynes seconds, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. You unanimously approve. Thank y'all. All right, our next item, because y'all should receive the consideration for approval of the thirty-five thousand dollar USDA grant, USDA grant for that CAGI equipment. Doug, you wanna say anything about this? We're pretty well covered in, in what you should have received in the package.
Yeah, hey, budget, uh, this was approved, uh, just the grant act, this is coming out of our regular budget amount. It was put in there ahead of time. We just, we approved the application process for you new commissioners, and we approved, uh, the resolution tonight. It's what we're asking for, so we can go ahead and get through.
The matching money is not new money, it's coming out of their budget, which has already been approved. Any questions, Doug? And then, Commissioner Taylor, make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, makes a motion, Commissioner Young seconds, Sam. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. You unanimously approve. Uh, next four items, needs to hear planning is open.
Uh, first on the agenda is a amendment to subdivision resolution, sorry, regulation, subdivision regulation. Uh, SR twenty twenty-two dash three. There was a public hearing earlier this evening with no comments. This is to, um, to comply with the state requirement, uh, bill H B twenty-five thirty-four. This is including language in our current, uh, books, how the state wants it.
Okay.
And they now should have a report in the patents.
Any questions on what this relates to minor subdivisions? And they got a little quicker approval than a major subdivision. Less than.
Four lots or less than mine. Four lots or less than mine.
If you don't mind being loud, you have to add utilities, great.
That doesn't mean to.
Now, it's there, it's out there on the public ground. Any questions? Any voted? All in favor of approval, name, please say.
We have to.
Would there be something else? Okay, motion to approve. Commissioner Cooley makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. You unanimously approve. The Sanders.
Second item is amendment to zoning resolution, CR twenty twenty-two dash four. Uh, same thing, this is language that the state has passed, it's state bill twenty-eight forty-nine. And this deals with, um, where eminent, eminent domain, uh, that middle county or city can fix on the property without a competition.
Any questions about this? Have you entertained motion for approval?
So much.
Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Douglas makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Frazren. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. You unanimously approve. Next, next item.
Next is, uh, for, we'd love to call for a public hearing for a rezoning request. Be a resiling group, twenty twenty-two dash R seven. This is a request from Jack Daniels Grand Forum to rezonate a parcel from A-one, which is agriculture, to C-one general commercial for future renovation. This is in order, and we gain all that time, so.
Okay, call for a public hearing before next month's commission meeting. Period motion, Commissioner Sanders makes a motion for approval, do I have a second? Commissioner Taylor seconds, any questions on this item? All in favor? Number of acres?
It's in your schedule, twenty-five. It is ninety-three point forty acres. I'm sorry, yeah, tax records say ninety-three point forty. Um, survey tax is ninety-one point four six.
So I have nine. Okay, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. We did a motion already.
We did, yes, sir.
All right, next item, Sanders.
Last one is also the call for public hearing, um, and I should mention on that one, this will be for October eighteenth at five thirty.
Okay.
Um, this is for a rezoning following the twenty twenty-two dash R eight for Mr. Lloyd Decker, and additionally, our principal director. And this is to rezonate from A-one agriculture to C-one general commercial for future shortages.
Okay. What's the will of the commission on this item? Okay, Commissioner Young makes a motion, but call before that public hearing, do I have a second? Commissioner Taylor seconds, any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. You unanimously approve. Thank you. Our next, Ms. Amy Bird, our main story before. Back to your patients.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Donnie, he's not made her happy. So I'll try to keep it brief, even though Jason knows I'm not very brief. But, uh, Main Street's been very busy, um, since I saw y'all four months ago. Um, I would encourage you, maybe I won't read this whole thing, y'all, but on the first of each month, we put out a newsletter, um, and it goes over everything that we've been working on, and also everything, um, that's coming up. Um, so some key, um, dates that I just wanna point out to y'all. Uh, we're having a strategic success next Thursday with some of our members. Um, and it's gonna be, um, like a dinner and learn kinda thing, um, to enhance some marketing, um, for the businesses in town. And it's free to all of our members. October first, we're having the Fall on the Fable Festival, which is gonna be similar to First Friday. Um, but we have forty-five members signed up already. Um, and it's gonna be from eight to twelve on the square. And going back to the First Fridays, we just wrapped it up First Fridays, which were, this year's been, it's been the most successful it's ever been. Um, we've had as many as ninety-three vendors on the square. Um, and so it's been a little crazy, crazy, we've used every spot that we could on, on the courthouse lawn, so I appreciate that. Uh, we all let Miss use the courthouse lawn for vendors. We'll ask a question, um, at the Rotary Club on how we prioritize vendors' faces and where they're gonna go. Uh, every vendor has their own little spot that they like, so we try to put them where they wanna be. Um, but it would be, so we have over a hundred bottle, water bottles, Jason knows all about these. It's just a water bottle with a number taped to it, sometimes they get one over there every may, um, each month. But, um, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I would love it if we could get some numbered parking spaces. And I'm not sure how the ownership of the parking spaces goes on the interior of the square. Part of them are owned by the county, part of, part of them are owned by the city, but I would love.
The interior ones are county.
Those are all county.
The exterior, the line is the middle of that inner circle.
Okay, well, I would love if y'all considered that for us, that would make our job a little bit easier, not just sort of for a Friday, but for Soul Hard Festival, and I'm sure Ghostbusters Passer also enjoy having some, um, numbered parking spaces. Because it's very labor intensive, um, to go out in the middle of the day, mark all those spots, and then after all the vendors get settled, take them back up. Um, so, uh, another event we have coming up, the Spirits for the Spirits on October thirteenth. And we have six stops on the square. Um, we're gonna start at the Blighard Hospitality House, and we'll have orders in line. And then we have stops at Bagley Bagley, Hannah Phillips, Bonanza, Abby Ruth, Roisin Gibbs, Darrell, and Tom and Gertrude. Those tickets are twenty-five dollars each. I think we have about thirty-three tickets available if y'all want to join us that night. Again, it's October thirteenth, five thirty to nine P M. Uh, tickets are available online only on our website at fablemainstreet.com. Um, this year, we're once again gonna do the Ghostbusters House tree lighting. And it's of the new for this year, it's gonna be a tour of downtown churches. So there's five churches in the downtown area, and we're gonna start at First Pres. Um, then we'll also visit First United Methodist, Baptist Church, Washington, um, Church of Pachy, Church of Pies, and the Episcopal Church in Manhattan. Um, the tickets for those are gonna be ten dollars each, and they go on sale October eleventh. Uh, it's just gonna be a great way for people to see the inside of a sanctuary. You know, I've been inside First Baptist Sanctuary, and Methodist Church, and the Presbyterian Church. So to be able to see that the inside of the other sanctuary is gonna be nice, and also learn their history, and so about the services that they offer. So that's the new for this year. Um, on Saturday, post-Christmas pass, we're gonna do ornament painting with kids, that's gonna be free for them, um, at the rain dirt station in the old service lot. And then, um, the church of Santa is also gonna be free. Um, in the past, we've welcomed these things, we've always been charged for it. We are gonna ask for donations, but we would like for this to be some of the free for all kids in the community. Um, three more things, I promise. So, we are having another strategic planning meeting with, um, the ladies from the state, Nancy Williams and Bridget Jones. I'm not sure if I can commit them, I'm pretty sure Will, you've committed them before. They put together fifteen page plan for us, so, um, I thought I was busy now, but we're about to get even busier. So I'll probably. So I'll probably be coming and asking for a little bit of help on some of the initiatives that Main Street wants to put into place. Uh, we have sixteen, uh, seniors on our youth boards around Riverside, Fayetteville High School, and Lincoln County, we had our first meeting last week, and I, I think the kids are, are, I don't even want to say kids, because they're also mature and respectful. And they said, yes, ma'am, ma'am, I was a little favored by that, and I'm probably not old enough for that yet, but, um, I, I, I think it's great to be able to see Fayetteville through the eyes of these people, or these young people, and how we can get them to come back. My main thing is, you know, what's gonna draw them back here besides their family, so I want my kids to come back here, not just because of me, but because of how much they look able in Lincoln County. Um, and the last thing that I'm really, really excited about, and it was just voted on last night, and I know Jason was a little, he was getting a little nervous about this one, because it's a big investment for Main Street. Um, it's this new software called Local, and they'll redesign our website, and, um, and also make membership management system, because right now I'm getting paper forms and putting them into a spreadsheet, which is really, um, it, it's really, it's labor, or not labor, but time-intensive, um. And he wants Fayetteville to be his flagship software, because they just moved here, um, I think he said, is he up there by the U, Jason, he said?
That's one of us helping out, though.
Yeah, I think he said around the, you know, western side of the county, uh, and he, he's gonna, he's, a lot of, he has eighty other Main Streets in this software, but he wants Fayetteville to be the flagship, because he's right here in our county, and to be a resource for us, I think it'll be a lot easier for us to jump into this, uh, software. It's a big investment upfront, but we're putting our membership money to good use, and the money that we receive from the county and cities, so I thank y'all so much for that. Again, our newsletters are on our website, um, fablemainstreet.com, and I'm sure there's a lot more in there than I missed, so y'all can come back later, I'm sorry to all of y'all.
Any questions, Miss Amy? I think I.
Thank y'all.
I believe we're down to two, Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Bus video of Academy Westland Body, Lincoln County, DC, met September sixth, two thousand four, two sixteen, Lincoln Central Cat, all members present, accept my commitment, Randy Brack. Item one, Lieutenant Busby, Austin, by Chairman, uh, Prior, who will be, accept my mission for Chairman, by Chairman, Secretary of Busby. Mr. Brown, nominated for Cunningham, Chairman, and Mr. Taylor, made the second, uh, nomination seats, and, uh, Mr. Cunningham will be elected by election, second, by Commissioner Sanders, who has seven years, one action, and elect, Mr. Cunningham, Chairman of Busby. Chairman Cunningham, open before for nomination for Vice President, motion made by Commissioner Taylor, nomination, Kate, you. Commissioner Sanders, nominated Ricky Brown, Mr. Brown, inclined, nomination, and that motion, nomination seats, and you will be elected by election, second by Mr. Caldwell, motion passed, seven years, one action, from Lieutenant, as Vice President of Busby. Mr. Chairman, open before for nomination for Secretary, Mr. Union, nominated for Mr. Brown, Richard Taylor, move, nomination seats, and Mr. Brown will be elected by election, second by Mr. Sanders, motion passed, seven years, one action, to elect Mr. Brown, Secretary of Busby. Item one, January, January, date, update, on effect bill, Lincoln County Humane Society, post contract has been sent by, uh, CD Mr. David on, on that truck, in a bigger view, by county officials, before Newbury, the third place on the county cap.
Now, sir, just, uh, what I said in announcement, we're making him pride to update you after that meeting.
Item three, DMA fire chief of Dun County, uh, eight, another positions for thirty-five thousand dollar community facilities grant, this is a motion. Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Taylor, by seven years, one action, to accept community facilities grant, with the county portion of eleven thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars, got information below.
We've already done that, that previously in this meeting, I said.
Item B, survey request for How Volunteer Fire Station, phone me for DMA bus, that's an information item. Item C, survey request for Bell property, amount two thousand dollars, the by tracks will possibly serve as a solid waste facility as well as a fire station. This survey will tie both tracks together into the county park, motioned by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Sanders, who has seven years, one action, to approve the survey cost of two thousand dollars.
Okay, what's the will of the commission on this item?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Commissioner Bryant, from back to motion for approval, let us second.
A second.
Mr. Taylor seconds, any questions on this?
This is the, the fire, the fire department.
This is, well, this is one, this is for approval of two thousand dollars for a survey of that property, uh, that we're looking at there, that joins, uh, community, available community property. It's really for future expansion, if there's any update on it, it, if there's anything, it did not get approval for as perky, uh, so that's just one of those, you know, whether we proceed with buying it, actually get all the information. The survey has not been completed, has it done?
No.
Okay, um, and, uh, the reason we requested probably the, a survey on it, um, there's been problems with the previous surveyor that did the survey a long time ago. Any questions? This just, to move to the next step, we're, we are still not saying we're gonna, we're gonna buy. Price on it is eight thousand dollars, we're probably spending a little more than this, this two thousand dollars on, but, uh, was there any cost on, uh, for him to look at that about perky?
Not yet, unless we move forward.
Okay, alright, any other questions? There should, there should, you should, we should've got to a quiet, Commissioner Bryant, right, I'm there, if you don't, we can, we can get you one. All in favor of approval of that, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed no, unanimously approved, Commissioner Bryant?
Item D, uh, letter to commission from Olympic County, DMA of volunteer pilot rescue, motion by Commissioner Taylor, seven years, Mr. Sanders, approved acceptance, of AFG grant, fund the county max portion of fifty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars, fifteen cents, got information up.
Okay, and in this, it doesn't show the total amount of grant, but it's, but it's five hundred and some thousand.
Five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, I believe, oh.
Okay, so.
So it matches, if you to change.
Okay, everybody understand that, now this is coming out of our, our general fund on, on this one, to match that, so we're about, at a little over six hundred thousand dollars total on this.
Approved.
Okay, got a commi, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Bryant makes a motion, Commissioner Cunningham seconds. I'm sorry, Commissioner Colley and Commissioner Walker, y'all are kind of blocked a little bit, so if you raise your hand, I'll, I'll see, but anybody got questions on this one? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed no, thank you, Commissioner Bryant?
Item four, financial, eight, financial, most by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Yu, has seven years, one action, in the, in the financial.
Entertain a motion that you received those financials in the packet.
So moved.
Mr. Douglas makes a motion that he received those, do I have a second? Commissioner Nick seconds, all in favor of acknowledging the, uh, receipt of those, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed no, unanimously approved, Commissioner Bryant?
The unclaimed property resolution, resolution attached, uh, motion by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Hamburg, has seven years, one action, to approve the attached unclaimed property resolution.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Something.
Commissioner Spry makes a motion for approval, I can see now, Commissioner Walker, or Commissioner Caldwell, moving back. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Walker makes second, any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed no, unanimously approved, Mr. Bryant?
I see, one point one, general purpose school fund, ten minutes, action, motion by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Hamburg, has seven years, uh, one action, to approve one point one, general purpose school fund, voting made.
Okay, what's the will of commission on this item?
One point one.
Commissioner Walker makes motion for approval, Commissioner Hewitt seconds, any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed no, unanimously approved, Commissioner Bryant?
I see, one point three, centralized cafeteria fund budget amendment, that's, that's motion, motion by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Yu, has seven years, one action, to approve one point three centralized cafeteria fund budget amendment.
What's the will of commission on this item? Commissioner Colley makes a motion for approval, let us second, uh, Commissioner Hamburg seconds, say it, any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed no, unanimously approved, Commissioner Bryant?
The no vote business, please, most, most by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Yu, has seven years, one action, no objection.
Alright.
The biggest one, Mr. Rowland, that's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
You did pretty good for a nil-fang. I believe after forty years, you're not even getting them paid.
May, may, I'll try, I'll strive to do that.
Okay, uh, anything to correct him on, uh, Commissioner Rowland? Did alright, okay, I think we're ready for, uh, Melody Public Man's work.
I have Halley Sowers by Commissioner Spray, Kimberly F Sink by Commissioner Brown, Kelly McKenzie, Bonnie Hareford by Commissioner Cunningham, Owen Bagley by Commissioner Caldwell, Shannon Neal by Commissioner Hamburg, Samantha Price by Commissioner Hamburg, Cynthia F Sanders by Commissioner Spray, Taylor Howell by Commissioner Sanders, Tracy Pollak by Commissioner Tackett, and Beth Barnes by Commissioner Spray.
Any additions, Commissioner Cunningham?
Want to make sure my two, we're Kelly McKenzie and Bonnie Hare?
Kelly McKenzie and Bonnie Hareford.
Okay, any other? Entertain a motion for approval, Commissioner Bryant makes a motion, now, Commissioner Cunningham, don't get ready, we're just halfway through. Commissioner Mitchell seconds. Uh, all in favor of approval, let this, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed no, unanimously approved. Okay, we got new business, and at this time, uh, McKenzie Carter, and I don't know Chris Murres, if you're gonna help McKenzie, or if she's got questions. Here's a little background, uh, some of the federal A R P monies, uh, you know, came all the way down to us, some of it stopped at the state, and then they directed them to other entities within the state. And now there are some grants through TDEC, uh, and that's what they're here to explain procedure, and what the county's looking at to do with our funds. It's kind of, it's not one of these that wasn't as straightforward as that A R P money that came down to the county, a little more complicated, but, um, McKenzie and Chris have done an excellent job in kind of directing us through this process. So I'll turn it over to y'all, McKenzie and Chris.
Good evening, thanks for having us, um, I am working, Chris, I'm working with South Central Tennessee Development District to help not just Lincoln County.
Is the micro, is the microphone down?
Maybe, is that better?
Yeah.
To get close to the microphone.
You may want, you may want to pick it out in there.
Okay, I am working with South Central Tennessee Development District to help all thirteen counties and all of the local governments within them, so total forty-nine municipalities, to get the applications from this collaborative planning phase into being applied for by November one of this year. Um, I don't know how familiar, familiar you are with the A R P funds, but there's a portion, one point three billion, that has been allotted to the state of Tennessee to deal with aging water infrastructure systems. Um, the money came from the federal government into TDEC. TDEC is administering these funds, the way they chose to administer these funds is to allot a certain amount to every county based on the ability to pay and debt. So Lincoln County is receiving, it'll say in a resolution, just a second. Lincoln County is receiving four point five million dollars, based on the A T P I index, the co-funding amount is twenty-five percent, which is about one point one million of co-funding dollars. That brings you to a total budget of five point seven million. Most counties don't have any utilities that are associated with the county government, so they are then having to partner with outside utilities. Lincoln County is unique in that we do have a utility that is associated with the county government. So this application is gonna be a non-colaborative application because the Lincoln County Board of Public Utilities is a part of the county government. So we have been working with Chris to put together an application that is dealing with the critical needs of Lincoln County, and their water infrastructure system. Um, the state of Tennessee, TDEC, determined these five critical needs based on this, it's a Tennessee infrastructure scorecard, that they worked with the Tennessee, um, Association of Utility Districts, that all utility districts in the state, whether it's associated with the local government or not, had to fill out. Lincoln County's critical needs, um, came out to be an asset management plan, so you all will see in the resolution, that one of the items in which we are going to apply for, um, one of the projects will be an asset management plan. The second item is water system improvements, um, is, I'll let Chris talk a little bit about that, but we are, with, with the rest of the funds, we are going to, um, do water line improvements. And Lincoln County Board of Public Utilities is going to pay the entire co-funding amount. So the allocation that is coming through the state, the county doesn't have to pay a cent of it, the Board of Public Utilities is paying the match, they're gonna handle all of the project. They're gonna handle the entire thing from procurement process, working with engineers, um, do you all have any questions?
Well, Chris, what, what project are we doing, what are we doing with this?
Excuse me, uh, this was in our budget, uh, we were looking to upgrade the pipe on several roads, where we had quite a few dozens of leaks in some cases, like El Mitchell Road, Winter Hollow Road, uh, and a couple others. Some of it would be through rock, and could be quite expensive, sometimes that can go a hundred and fifty dollars a foot. I'm hoping we can target about seven to ten miles of water line.
One of the things in, in this, it really restricts you, because we've asked about every question, can we use it for this, can we use it for that, can we use it for running water to the new industrial park, can we run it to, sewer to doing at the South Lincoln and stuff? You cannot do basically new stuff, uh, and it's pretty restrictive, they want you to improve your system that you got now, uh, so there were lots of things we asked questions, but we just were pretty well limited on that. Okay, recognize Christian Bryant?
Um, it's just one point, one million dollar match, gonna be okay with your fund balance, you gonna be okay with that?
Yes, yes, and there, there was in our budget.
Just wanted to make sure, thanks.
You shouldn't be running any new water lines at all.
Unfortunately, it doesn't. TDEC has been very specific about these grant funds, it may only be used to modernize, improve, and strengthen existing infrastructure, aging infrastructure, it can't be used for anything new.
But you can upgrade three inch to six inch?
Yes, sir, as you are improving, as you are changing out, you're improving your hearing, then improvements can go. Yes, sir, as you are improving, as you are changing out, you're improving, you're repairing, the improvements can go from three inch to six inch, um but you just can't run new water line.
Is that is that also going to service line?
Yes, sir.
They have a copper inventory and.
We have some.
Place down, I have service lines that come.
We have some copper, uh everything we put back now is fixed. And all the pipe we use now is.
Okay, any any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, how many we allow the county mayor to enter into this for free?
Okay, do I have a second? Commissioner Ashley seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody that was talking and didn't vote? All in favor to vote yes if now you'd like to. Okay.
He he's not voting.
Uh you're not voting, you're abstaining seriously?
Yes, I am.
Okay, okay, we have an abstention and uh Commissioner Bryant is left now, so we have one act and one abstention and twenty-two yeses.
Yes.
Okay? Alright.
Thank you all.
Thank y'all. Any other new business for, uh Commissioner Cunningham dismisses this?
I have just a question, I'll make it clear.
Okay.
Um at several of the city meetings, they have brought up the idea of having two representatives from the county and the city sit on a board for the humanities. I would love to see that happen with two commissioners and two hold them in as part of the negotiation process. At the last city meeting, um during that presentation, it seemed like to me, the county wasn't getting as much representation as we needed to make that contract fruitful. And come to an agreement sooner. I hope you you watch the meeting and the discussion there, I think that if we had some more involvement, we could come to a decision quicker. And I think the humanities society has done a great job for the community for several years. I would just love to see some better representation and a quicker decision. I would feel better about voting if I had more information in that aspect as well.
Okay, let me let me update a little and back to yours on that is kind of where we are now, we're probably, sometimes we do things and we get way down the road because we did it that same way for a long period of time. Probably what we really need to do, and this is from coming from the city also, we'll probably need to do a request for a proposal, uh because not only should, we're spending taxpayer dollars and um if we do it like we would do any other of our business, that's what we would advertise for, a proposal, they can make a proposal too. So once we got proposals, I agree that we need the commission involved in it, lots more than they have been. But after Friday's meeting, I'll know more, but if y'all can make, you make any motion you want to, this is a new business, commissioners, you know, get thirteen votes, you can do anything you want to. Uh but if it comes to spending money, we can't do it starting here, but if you want to add two members of this body far as negotiating what happens on that, I mean, that's something I'd see. Mr. Bryant?
Any event of RFP, will they still be a nonprofit? In that case, they would be an entity of the county too, will they not?
That, I mean, there could be ten, ten entities that would may do animal control, but they're, we're not limited with just them under, they may be the only one that would that would apply for it, I don't know.
In RFP situation, they would no longer be a, I would bet they're not profit.
They would, they would, they would still, they can still be a nonprofit and perform a for-profit entity, they could perform, they're doing that now, you know, we're paying them to animal control. As a nonprofit.
Well, I have to see if we have.
Wait, wait just a second, I I recognize Commissioner Duncan, or before you you get second comments, Commissioner Duncan.
Mr. Mayor, I'm still PO'd about this resolution. It plainly says right here that uh Lincoln County, Tennessee owns and operates a water and wastewater system that provides water and wastewater services for the benefit of Lincoln County residents. Our family has lived here for a hundred years and we have never had any city water run down Highway one twenty-one. And that's where I've got a problem with this resolution. Now, they they can say what they want to, but uh I I was upset about Broadway, and I I told you that before, uh me. That, I don't know what else to say, but there needs to be highway, I mean, like a water line run from Red House Road up to the lower instead of going around the GM and all up through that area right there. And leaves about five hundred acres out there, it's gonna be divided into housing and and and. Mine will be, it's for sale right now, I've got about three hundred acres up there, I'll be glad to sell it. But you ain't got any water. They just cut us off. So I just want to get that off my chest.
Okay, I mean.
Mr. Chairman, I'd say we're talking about, I'd say we're talking about the humanities side tomorrow.
Well, we are, but you know.
We're completely off track.
If it makes Commissioner Duncan feel better, I'm glad we let him do it. If it makes you feel any better, I don't, I don't think Commissioner Cunningham or myself have broad man, and I know I'm not gonna get it on any of these grants on this.
Well, I'm hiding, y'all.
Be quiet. I ain't.
Hey, just be glad it stayed there.
Yeah, I think so, okay, back back to that one we go. Okay, anyone else before we go to the second round of discussion, okay, Commissioner Rawls, you're recognized.
So at the meeting, they were discussing the contract, um the city administrator stated that they couldn't include anything in there about ARP funds. I just feel like if we are entering into a contract, I would feel better if we had more representation, our end say we couldn't include anything in there. And ARP funds, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that if that picks as ABC, we may not need to do that for.
Well, when we when we discussed that money, it was kind of a backstop for if we as a county had to do something on a facility. Um because we know at some point, the way we're doing it is not gonna work, uh what that's gonna look like, I don't know.
Well, uh that kind of bothered me and then Cindy Kite stood up and she filled up the old contract that the city had, the new one, very few changes hasn't made to that. And then the nineteen talking points they had provided were not included in that, it's kind of like we're gonna do this this handful of things, we're not gonna do things that you asked for. And I know as a constituent, I know that things have been slugging the government, but I they are, I feel like, I know that they feel like they're just hitting their head against the wall over and over and over again. And I just, and I can see it, I feel like things have stretched on at these meetings every time when um Mr. Cunningham asks where we at, it's just say at the city's handling, city's handling. I don't feel like it's fruitful, I feel like the county should have our own contract, the city should have their own, since we both own the facility, we can come together, we actually. And then working at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, most of the time the city matches things, so I kind of feel like they should put a little more in as well. I just want to get that off my chest.
Let y'all both feel better. You know a motion to adjourn, you don't get adjourned.
I'm free for motion, I'm moving adjourned.
Yeah, I have a second.
I I recognize my duty.
Uh Mr. E wants to be recognized.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I know it's lame, everybody's want to go home, might just show it. I just wanted to buy all the pictures, invited the public, wants to come out and visit the highway department, see the inner workings, uh go over our budget, anything that we can do, I welcome anybody come out to see. Got a nice facility down, better on Rock Creek, but it is something to see if you ever seen the highway. About everybody else, wants to come, just give me a towel, we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
We'll have big food.
We'll have big food.
What you what you, that's not seen that everyone.
Okay, we have motion and second to adjourn, all in favor of adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
Who was the second?
For adjourn.
Who's second?